Good evening. It is Monday, August 10th, 10th. We're gonna start in good tonight. 2020 at 7:00 PM. I'm David Lindsay, President of Speedway Town Council. I call tonight's meeting to order. Joining us this evening, to my far right, is Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate left is Vice President of the Council, Vince Noblet. To his left is Counselor Gary Riggs.
Good evening.
And to his left is our newest member of our town council, Gary Pettigo.
Good evening.
Joining us in the audience is our town manager, Carlos May, Clerk Treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell, and our town attorney, Bob Clutter. At this time, we will post our, or we will follow our agenda. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our July 13th, 2020 meeting. Those have been distributed. Any corrections or changes to those this evening? Hearing none, those will be accepted as presented. With council's approval, we have a guest from Senator Todd Young's office. I'd like to change the agenda and see if she could come up and speak to us right now. So Monica Kowinski is with Senator Todd Young's office, and she's asked for a few minutes to speak this evening. Yes, that's fine.
Thank you so much, councilors, for having me this evening. I just wanted to introduce myself to you. My name is Monica Kozlowski. I'm a Regional Director for Senator Todd Young. I cover eight counties here in Indiana, Marion County, and seven others on either side, and then going up north to Kokomo and the Anderson area. But as you know, the Senator is our Senior Senator here. He serves on four committees in the Senate. The Finance, Small Business and Entrepreneurship, which is something that is really hitting home right now during the pandemic, Foreign Relations, as well as Commerce, Transportation, and Energy. One of the things that our office offers to constituents is constituent services. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, as you interact with the community here, if there's ever a federal issue that comes up that you want to direct someone to our office for assistance, we have a team of half a dozen staff members who interact with federal agencies on a daily basis on behalf of Hoosiers, whether it's veterans not getting their benefits, or maybe someone lost their passport and isn't sure where to turn, or if there's an international issue, given the Senator's position on the Foreign Relations Committee, we're happy to try and assist. Other than that, there's some things that we're also working on. If you have anyone in the community who's interested in potentially a student potentially attending a service academy, we have the academy nominations process at our office, and I'm actually the coordinator for that. So we're in the process of scheduling a virtual academy day in the next few weeks, where we'll bring together representatives from all of the service academies, Air Force, West Point, Naval, and have the opportunity for students who are interested in maybe looking into that a little bit further, whether they're in junior high or into high school, so that they can have that opportunity to interact. But we are here to try and assist, as well as provide support. I'll also mention, if you're interested in applying for a federal grant opportunity, don't hesitate to reach out for a letter of support. I did bring with me a few of these handouts. I've handed to a few of you. Just, it's something that Senator's been working on recently, the Restart Act. I had a chance to talk to Gary a little bit about that earlier today. As you know, during the pandemic, the SBA rolled out the PPP in early April, which benefited a lot of businesses, but some small to medium-sized businesses fell through the cracks there. And so this would be a piece of legislation that has, right now, gained 54 members of the Senate bipartisan support. So we're trying to see if that can't be put into the coronavirus relief package that's coming before the Senate soon. So if you're interested in learning more about what the Senator's up to, I encourage you to visit our website, young.senate.gov. Within about 10 seconds of visiting, you'll be prompted to sign up for his e-newsletter. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is appointment to the Speedway, or appointment to the Speedway Board and Commission. And we, with Counselor Pettigo, moving to the council, we have a seat available on our Cable Commission, and I was contacted by Jeff Smith. So with that, I will open up.
Mr. President, I'll go ahead and nominate Jeff Smith to Cable.
I move to close the nomination. There's been a motion to appoint Jeff Smith to the Cable Commission. Any questions from the audience? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Jeff Smith to the Cable Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Item four on our agenda is ordinance 1328, which is an ordinance establishing a special event permit. And our town manager, Carlos May, will address this this evening. Carlos?
Thank you, councilors. So very quickly, this is a special events permit ordinance. The main purpose of this is to establish a process to permit special events conducted by the private sector that are going to be utilizing town resources, town streets, facilities, or any other service that we might be able to provide. Now, we in Speedway recognize that these special events enhance the lifestyle of the community. They allow visitors to experience basically everything and anything that the town of Speedway has to offer. But additionally, it is recognized that tax-exempt nonprofit organizations that benefit the community are very central to the quality of life here in Speedway. And they often develop, through their special events, the resources to provide essential services to the citizens of Speedway, as well as to their organizations that they do. So by recognizing special event venues, as well as this ordinance, we can then provide a coordinated process for the regulation of these activities, so that they can be conducted in conjunction with special events, but also to ensure the health and safety of the patrons of the special events, to make sure that illegal activity is prohibited from occurring within these venues, as well as to protect the rights and interests granted to the holder of the special events permit. It's basically also then intended to create a mechanism for cost recovery and revenue sharing without having any adverse effects on those events or the process by which they get implemented. And that is the purpose of this ordinance. Any questions?
Good question, Carlos.
Actually, first, if we have questions, we need a.
Motion?
Need a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as stated on 1328.
Second.
There's been a motion to accept ordinance 1328 this evening. Any questions from the council?
No, I'll ask it. On a, for the event, if it's on private property, does it still require to get a permit?
If it impacts city services, in this particular situation to be public safety, if it's, this is just an example. If it's a small fundraiser with five people, the impact from city services is basically none. Now, if it's on held on private property, let's say, an IMS parking lot, but there's a couple hundred, then this is a special event because we need to have a public safety plan, health, EMS, fire, safety. All of those services are now definitely impacted by this event, in which case they would need to go through that.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
So Carlos, seeing the fees on the event, who is going to be required to pay these fees if it's run? I mean, I guess, see, there's a few questions, I guess, that I have. So we have some of our main events, like Rockin' on the NASCAR Haller, some of those. And we're, you're now moving those to civic sponsors or events?
Those are examples of the types of events that would fall under this. And we included those because those are the ones that the town already knows about. And they can have a reasonable concept and then apply that to a different event.
Okay. So then it's whoever is coming to us in that regards to pay the event fee, and then, and they pay that obviously other entry fees or whatever.
Correct. And the fees fluctuate depending on size and scope of the event. So it's not a one-size-fits-all or a one-cost-for-everything. Obviously, we recognize that smaller entities that have a smaller need are going to pay a lot less than someone who's going to have, you know, 3,000 people, for example, at an event like this.
And then, did we also include in this, so for those events to be, to cover their own type of security? Or are they still going to rely on our police department and things like that to close down streets? Or are those going to be specific to certain main events?
It would be, again, size and scope of the event. They will have a requirement, for example, we had a company contact us regarding putting up a big screen to show the race for race fans and do like a drive-in type of situation. Under this aspect, they would have been responsible for not only paying the permitting fees, but then having that public safety plan and making sure that they had hired off-duty officers to help patrol it. Now, of course, we, the town, would have still been involved when it came to fire, or if a large event broke out, in which case we need more than the four officers that they had, then yes, the town would be, would be responsible for going out there and ensuring the public safety.
Okay.
We are not having that event.
No, we are not having, that was just an example. That was just an example. We are not having that event.
Wanted to clarify before someone says we are.
Understood, yes. No, no events of that size or scope are happening. It was just an example to illustrate what would apply here.
Now, just using your, yes, drive-in type example that you were just referring to there, what about police, the need for police upon the event ending?
That would have had to have been part of where the town comes in and why the permit was being paid for in the first place. Because there would have had to have been traffic coordination, ingress and egress of the location, and certainly the four or five officers off-duty that they would have hired for the internal protection would not be the same that would then handle the traffic aspect at the end of the event or the beginning of the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 1328 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Thank you, Carlos. Item five on our agenda is ordinance 1329, an ordinance amending town, the town code of Speedway Chapter 7.05, which is relating to animal licenses, and our Clerk Treasurer is Jacob Blaisdell.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was an ordinance that we were proposing that would eliminate the pet license fee that we have in town currently with each animal you're supposed to register with my office, and there's a $3 fee for each license. And it's something that we felt is kind of burdensome, and frankly, is more expensive to collect than it is to, to actually, the fee itself covers. Since we had kind of put this ordinance together, particularly today, some other concerns with this ordinance came up regarding the adoption component. And so we're looking at making some other adjustments now. Myself and Carlos working with Bob Clutter. So there's some other adjustments we want to make to this ordinance. The intent of this ordinance was that it wouldn't become effective until next year anyway, because the license requirement was in effect this year. So no rush to make this modification. So if it's okay with all of you, we'll kind of withdraw this ordinance and take a look at it with some other adjustments at our next council meeting.
Counsel concurred. We'll pull it for the evening.
Yes.
For the public's, Carlos, I don't know if you want to address this. There was some communication today that came from your office. If you want to.
I can discuss it now, or I was going to include that in the town manager report.
Let's go and discuss it now, please.
So the main, the main communication was a lack of communication, or more precisely, miscommunication. This all stems from the animal ordinance, as Jacob was just discussing. It, it is old. It needs to be modernized, brought up to spec, so to speak. And what it included was language that very specifically mandated an adoption fee be charged to anyone and everyone that was collecting a pet from our street department and then doing whatever they wanted to do with it, be that adopted for personal use or then to rehome. The way it was written mandated this collection. For the past several years, a nonprofit was not paying it, not due to any ill will or malice on their behalf. But that waiving of the fee was not passed by the council. There was no resolution discussing that. It was decided upon by a street department employee that no longer works for the town. And in order to make sure that the town was not open to any sort of litigation, because we are then being seen as picking and choosing what individuals or groups are going to be following what ordinances, or if they themselves just said, "I'm not going to follow this ordinance because this other group is not following this other one." I made a decision to basically table that waiver of the fee until we could redo the entire ordinance. One of the original tasks that the council had me do is to review the entire opus of town ordinances. And thus far, I've noticed between 95 and 100 different sections that we definitely need to address. This one just happened to be the topic of the day. And in essence, the community thought, and here's where the miscommunication occurred, the community thought that this was a new fee being charged specifically and solely to this one organization, when that was not the case at all. It was a, "We need to charge everyone or no one," which basically means we needed an even field, specifically so that we, the town, are not open to liability and being sued. And this would have been addressed at the next council session, which basically means I tabled the waiver for three more weeks. But because I did not inform the nonprofit prior to that, when they found out about it, the assumption was made that this was something targeted specifically towards them, when that was not the case at all. After I chatted with the folks at the nonprofit, I then contacted literally every individual who emailed me, called me, or left a voicemail, and explained what was going on and why this was happening. The sole reason for this decision was we were open to legal liability and the potential for a lawsuit. And as town manager, I could not allow that. And so I figured a three-week pause of the waiver, that it happened without council approval, was well within the scope and duties of the office, as well as the best interests of the town. And as the Clerk Treasurer just stated, we're tabling this one modification so that we can attack the entire ordinance as a whole, instead of doing it piecemeal. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I want to thank the people that reached out with the kind emails that were sent my way today. We heard your voices. There, I will agree, there was some miscommunication. Could be on my part. I take responsibility for that. It was somewhat on Carlos's fault, and some on the group that there was just a big miscommunication on this. We are going to work to clarify this. We have a meeting set up this Wednesday to work on this. I plan on attending the meeting, and the Counselor Riggs will as well. So we heard your voices. We, this is something that we want to work with the group on and come to a reasonable resolution to this, is just what I'd like to add to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
Item six on our agenda is approval of an HR consulting on-call and monthly retainer agreement with Lisa Schmidt, and our Clerk Treasurer, Jacob Blaisdell, will address this this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this is, as it says, a consulting agreement for HR services, specifically with Lisa Schmidt, who's done great work for us in a similar capacity in the past. We would like to bring her on in more of this on-call, ongoing agreement with her. We don't, we don't have a full-time HR director for the town of Speedway, but we do need those professional services and expertise, and would like to bring that to the town. It's our employees and managers on a cost-effective basis, so would appreciate your support of entering into this agreement.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the HR consulting agreement as described by our Clerk Treasurer.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to approve the consulting agreement with Lisa Schmidt. Any questions or comments from the public? Questions from the council? Jacob, can you, I know she's been with us for some time. Do you know, like, number of years that she's done work for us, approximately?
I'd say for probably a couple of years now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will agree, she's done very, very good work for us.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consulting agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. Jacob, if you'd like to stay there.
I'll just keep camping out.
Item seven on our agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our Clerk Treasurer. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. President. So presented to you are the claims from July 1st through August 7th. Those have been distributed in advance, and I have no adjustments to them. Be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, would appreciate your support.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims presented to us by Clerk Treasurer.
Second? And a motion and a second to approve the claims that's presented by our Clerk Treasurer this evening. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five to zero. And no utility adjustments, Jacob, correct?
No utility adjustments this month.
Anything else you'd like to report?
I do have a couple of things. It's been widely reported now. As a lot of folks know, we've had a moratorium on disconnects of utilities, and it's been Speedway Utilities and all utilities. That, the current governor's order goes through the end of this week, and he has affirmatively stated that he intends to let that expire and not do another extension. So disconnects will start back up on the next billing cycle, which, for us, is September 10th. And I just want folks to know that, well, the governor also requests that utilities do a, try to work on some type of repayment plan. We, as municipal and utility, aren't legally required to do that, but I certainly intend to abide by that request. So if you're not sure that you're going to be able to repay your bill, and you're concerned about potentially being on the disconnect list, I'd encourage you to contact my office, 317-246-4111. We're, like everybody else, kind of, we have staff in and out sometimes. So if you call and can't, somebody picks up, please leave a voicemail. We'll get back to you. We'll be happy to work out a repayment arrangement. Six months is kind of what the governor requested, and I think that makes sense. So we'll be happy to work with you. If you're also not sure about even getting current with the six-month payment plan, there are a couple of options. You can contact the Wayne Township Trustee, or there's also a service called 211 in Indiana, and they can help you navigate and find resources that might help you pay for that. Other thing I have is that we have budget meetings coming up. There was an article that several friends sent to me over the weekend. Apparently, the Clerk Treasurer of New Palestine has locked out the council and the town manager and some department heads and isn't giving them information. And I just want to assure folks that that's not happening here in the town of Speedway. I'm sharing information with everybody and working with our department heads to come up with appropriate budgets.
So I can't delete that from my calendar?
Yeah, no, you're going. And, and just let folks know that we are having budget meetings with the department heads this week, Wednesday and Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. People are welcome to come and join us and attend. We will be observing masks, though. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Next is a report from our department supervisors, and we will begin first tonight with our Economic Development Director, Tim Gropp.
Appreciate all the support, guys. Good evening, council. Just a couple of updates this evening, important updates. We met on-site at Founder Square, 25th and High School Road to check on the progress. We're not quite where we need to be on there, but we were able to open 25th Street to a ride-in, ride-out only at High School. We're still waiting on IPL to hook up the power, as well as some equipment from Indianapolis to sync the two lights at Crawfordville and High School with 25th and High School. So there's communications out on both of those, and we're just waiting for those two items to be done before we can turn the light on. As soon as that happens, we'll be able to energize the lights and open that intersection. In the meantime, we do have some adjustments to make. We pushed to get 25th Street open today, but there's still a couple signs. Crawfordville Road still says 25th Street's closed, so we'll get that down tomorrow, and we'll adjust some lanes. They did shift the closed lanes on the inside to the outside. They will be starting concrete work on some of the sidewalks. That'll be over the next couple of weeks, and then finishing up the median as well. So right now, there's no left-hand turns at the intersection, but you can access all the businesses on 25th off of High School at this point. We will also be working to reroute Indigo Buses, as well as work with the fire, fire trucks, to be able to get them back on 25th Street, which will then be able to lift the parking restrictions hopefully this week at some point. So that'll all be happening.
Tim, before you go on.
Yes.
I know we've talked about this, and I've talked to Carlos about it. As you go north on High School Road from Crawfordville, when that, the traffic signal to go into Founder Square will not allow you to go into the new complex yet, obviously.
Correct.
I have some major concerns that there's going to be some U-turns that people will attempt. And we spoke to Bob Clutter, our town attorney, and that is a city street. So I, whatever we need to do to see that if the city could put a sign up for that, if it's something I need to send or Carlos needs to send, but I'd like, that's a concern that has me kind of worried. So if, I don't know, if you could address that, or Carlos, or.
We'll, we'll reach out. Again, we have some adjustments to make tomorrow. Just, we got it open today, but now we see we have to change a few things.
And then.
We'll make sure we reach out to the city of Indianapolis about.
And also, so the, so the public knows, when I came to the meeting tonight, Crawford, or High School Road was backed up from Crawfordville Road up to Hickory Wood, because you have one lane now, where before you had the turn lane to go on the westbound Crawfordville Road and eastbound. So I don't know if you and Rob can go out there tomorrow and talk with them, and maybe have some cones moved to where the south end of that can be put, put open a little bit more for some more access, if that's even possible. But that's something I'd like maybe just at least take a look at.
Yes.
And while you're on that subject too, sorry. You had said something about possibly releasing the parking restrictions. I know that those parking restrictions have helped greatly on Parkwood there, but we still need to keep them because the buses will have to come through that way if they're coming south on High School, correct? Because you're not going to, they're not going to be able to turn left onto.
You're right.
So we really still need to keep those parking restrictions there.
That's a good point. Correct. So we'll, we'll work on that timeline. We won't lift them until all the buses and fire trucks get diverted, which is the main reason for that route.
And I'll, I'll let you continue, or I would have forgot what I was going to mention, so.
No, those are all, all good. We'll, we'll keep adjusting as this goes on. I just want everyone to be aware, please be cautious in that area. You know, the workers still get honked at and yelled at and everything else. They're trying to get this job done as quick as possible. There are going to be lane restrictions for the next few weeks, and they're going to move around. And we'll, we'll have to shut a lane down on 25th Street still as we put in the sensors for the lights. So there's still work to be done. We just worked as hard as we could to get 25th back at least open to a ride-in, ride-out. But please be cautious in that area. There's still going to be a lot of people working in the ride-away, and we want everyone to be safe. Also, on Founder Square, I'm happy to announce that the Hotel Conference Center did close on the land, on the property and their construction loan, so they're working on their engineering now, and hopefully they'll be submitting plans in Indianapolis in the next couple of months. And then also, just wanted to report that the Circle K that was pinned for the corner ended up pulling out of the project. They had an option to try and move to the corner or basically get bought out. They, we are obviously struggling with the wellhead protection area restrictions on the gas stations. And at, it got to a point where they decided it wasn't worth the fight anymore. So the developer bought them out, and they moved on. So we're actively pursuing other opportunities on that corner lot.
A comment on that. That is something that we, the town, approved for them to do.
Twice.
The city said no, correct?
Correct. It was approved in our original zoning, and then it was approved in a Board of Zoning Appeals, a request from Circle K directly, twice. And the town, when we went through our zoning, ended up pulling that out to make sure that we got our overall zoning approved at the MDC. And then they were getting ready to go to the Metropolitan Planning Commission and decided not to move forward with the, with the proposal, so.
Correct. Thank you.
And then, real quick on Will Shaw. So we are making progress. We're still on. We're still not ready to announce a lot of the details yet, but just so the public knows and timeline, you know, there is progress being made on a partnership agreement. They're working on other aspects, including the hotel management agreement with Hilton. And so those details are being worked out with all parties involved, but there is progress being made as far as the timeline. There's still, once all that is signed and worked out, there's still financial review. You know, everyone's hope is that we could get some work started again this fall. I just want everyone to realize that if it doesn't happen this fall, we will probably not start in the winter, just because the winter mobilization costs are much higher. So if we can't get to a point this fall, it would be in the spring. As soon as we have additional information, as soon as we're able to release details, we will let you know, but we feel good about the progress being made, but we still have a lot of due diligence to go. We're trying to move through that as quickly as possible so that we can get to a spot where we can, A, announce how we're moving forward and, B, give you guys a better timeline as to how that's going to be moving forward. So this is a positive route and we want to work through these details because this is the quickest, best route to get that project completed.
I've got a question for you, Tim. Do they have a crew that can do a little bit better job on the grass cutting between the Speedway gas station and their development? I mean, they attempted it to whack it down. They need to clean that whole thing up. I can understand they're not going to be, you know, working with it right now.
Yeah, we actually sent them a code enforcement letter just to have it documented. We've talked to the developer. The intent was to have that all cleaned up by race time here. So we'll follow up again with that this week, have them come out and clean that up. And then our intent is, whether they start this fall or not, is to have them come out and clean up the property in full detail, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
We're worried if we're still on air with the wet weather, but I've been told we're good.
Yeah, I heard your mic kind of...
Yeah, we're still recording, so.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next is our police chief, Jim Campbell.
Good evening. Now, I'll start with the 500, which this will, without a doubt, be the strangest 500 we've ever had. And unless you've been on another planet, no fans. Now, the issue for us, obviously it changes staffing probably being the biggest thing. We'll continue to work with our partners at the state, federal levels and, you know, this is going to be a lot like the 400 for us. Speedway officers will do the infield and, you know, some of the gates. Marion County Sheriff will provide bikes for Georgetown Road and Main Street. The Indianapolis Police Department will provide traffic units, you know, for whatever traffic we do have. And, you know, it's, again, one, we went from a SEER-1 to a SEER-5, which basically means that, you know, a lot of the federal assets that we would have brought, we're really not going to need. So, you know, that is a major change for us and, you know, I, we'll see how it goes. But the only thing that it does raise is the issue of parking. And I've talked to President Lindsey about, you know, we're really not going to enforce parking other than what Main Street, we'll monitor it. Typically for a 500, we close Main Street. So our recommendation is that, you know, with approval of the council, that we'll continue to monitor Main Street. But, you know, other than that, with no fans for the 400, parking was just not an issue. So...
Does the council concur with the no parking except for Main?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, we are going to hire two new officers on August 17th, Ray Tice and Hunter Dalky, which brings us to filling one more vacancy. And we're hoping we got the candidate to do that. Oh, the fire department will be with us over at the track too, I should...
On cue.
Something reminded me. The only other thing is budget. August 13th, we're looking forward to a budget meeting.
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Next is our fire chief, Bob Fishburne.
Well, Chief Campbell covered public safety for you with the 500. And I think the thing that Chief Campbell and I can both say is, I don't think we've ever planned logistically for so many things that aren't going to happen. And we know it's just as frustrating to Roger Penske and his team, but we'll be there to support him, you know, in whatever capacity. And a couple of things that I wanted to talk about with schools starting. Our plan, as I mentioned in the department head meeting, is that we're going to put together a virtual fire prevention package that teachers can plug and go. The cable is going to help me videotape. And then we have things that we normally take and have them watch, which will supplement the teacher's ability. And then we'll, we'll do something new to maybe answer some general questions that the kids might have. And all the schools will have, you know, that available to them in late September and October. And we'll work with especially the first, second, and third graders, which is, you know, what we normally do. But it'll be available to all ages, so we hope to have that on board. And then just a couple of days after our last town council meeting, you know, we're out there working hard all the time, but we've had a couple pretty significant runs lately and I just wanted to mention them to you guys. You know, they've been on our social media. But back on the 15th of July, we had the apartment fire up on Lupine Terrace. And Battalion Chief Hartman was a part of operations with that, but our ladder company on A Shift rescued two people from that fire. One was a 14-year-old that lived for four or five days and then succumbed, you know, to his injuries. And one was his mother, who was pronounced on the way to the hospital. But our ladder crew went through a window, searched and rescued both of them, getting them out of the building and giving them an opportunity to survive. But like most things, you know, there were six agencies on that fire. It's kind of right up there off 34th Street where you get Wayne Township, Pike, IFD, and Speedway, and IMPD, and IEMS. And it's just kind of amazing to me how those agencies always work together because of our mutual aid agreement. And we couldn't do it without them and they couldn't do it without us. It's the quickest response, it's the best service to the citizens. And I appreciate you guys allowing us to be a part of mutual aid because we're the small guy in a big game here in Marion County and it allows us to provide really good service. The other is, our C Shift had a swift water rescue right down by Little Eagle Creek. And it was like the second one in a month. You know, weather was hot, people are trying to cool off, you've got some people living down in that area. But again, Speedway Police and Fire were just key in rescuing the one back, what would have been on the 23rd of July. Our guys got the rope to the person that was being swept away, but Speedway PD and their drone was just instrumental in giving us that ability to see. I think it was Sergeant McAtee. And, or, yeah, Lieutenant, I'm sorry. Lieutenant McAtee did a great job. Some of the other drones got too high and so they got frozen out. And he knew to come in at a certain angle so he could get up and we would have a bird's eye view of that. You don't always get to use the drone. We don't always get to use the Polaris, but all of those tools that the town, you know, that we've spent on tax dollars come in handy to save lives. So those two runs were just significant. I wanted to commend those guys and let you know how much we appreciate the ability, have the tools we need when we need them. We don't need them every day, but when you need them, they save lives, so. You guys have any questions at all? All right.
Bob, there's, excuse me, chief, there's some weather happening. I'm assuming between you, police...
Yeah, my phone is blowing up.
Everybody's watching us to make sure we're...
Both of our stations are out right now and they're probably going to be out. And Rob may leave before he gets up here, so.
Thank you.
Next is our park and recreations director, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. We were able to get in three of our four concerts and all three of them averaged just over 200 attendees. Our July 30th concert with My Yellow Rickshaw was canceled due to storms, but they have rescheduled with us to make up the concert on Thursday, September 3rd. Time is dependent, we're still planning on 7:00 to 9:00, but since that's later in the year and it gets darker earlier, we may push the time up 6:00 to 8:00, but we'll post that out there once we know for sure. We are also working on hopefully another concert, the afternoon of Saturday, August 29th, with two concert/jazz-type bands. And so that time would be determined if we work that out to make that happen as well. Both of those are dependent on continued mandates due to COVID. About two years ago, we installed six large signs, three in each of our parks, outlining our basic park rules. Back then, the Parks Board did not want to clutter up the parks with a lot of signs, but recognized many were not following rules outlined in park ordinances. We continue to have violations on a regular basis of rules that are in place to not only keep our parks beautiful, but also to keep them safe for all users. Every time we try to educate violators of park rules, their argument is they don't see any signs. We've had to call the police several times for vandalism due to some of these violations and the officers have recommended that we put up signs. So we started installing new signs of our existing rules of no bicycle riding, skateboarding, scooter riding, or roller skating in the playground areas, tennis court, shelters, and gazebo. These activities are welcome on the sidewalks and paths around the park. These activities within the band areas cause extensive damage to the rubberized playground surface, concrete chipping in the gazebo and on the steps of the gazebo, cracks and paint chipping on the wooden picnic tables, and damage to the paint and surface of the tennis court. I understand some have been confused by the addition of the signage and I hope this explains the reason for them. I am glad the signs are now noticeable and hopefully will reduce those violations. And I just wanted to point out a few other basic rules that we have in the park that people seem to continue violating, and that's no smoking in the park, no littering, no parking the wrong way, especially here by Leonard Park. I personally witnessed a bicyclist almost get hit. The police have been notified about that and are stepping up their patrols in that area. And also that all pets must be leashed at all times in the town of Speedway. I just wanted those reminders out there and if anybody has any questions about it, they're welcome to call me or email me.
Great, thank you, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our public works report, and Rob Whitnight. Sounds like he may be running at the door here in a minute.
Yeah, good evening, council. We'll get started with sanitation plant. And the month of July, they had 4.4 inches of rain and they treated and reclaimed 125 million gallons of water. The waterworks, the water tower will be getting inspected on 16th Street tomorrow and the groundwater plant is offline for maintenance right now. And for the month of July, they did 31 point, or 31, 31 million 584 gallons of water out of Eagle Creek and then 30 million 252 gallons out of the well water. So it's a lot of water being used, especially with the temperatures. As far as the street department, our resurfacing project's going really well. Weather's kind of playing a game with us, but they will be moving up onto Elaine Street this week, weather-dependent. And we're cleaning the sewers outside Speedway right now, district, then we'll be moving into town. And that's pretty much all I have.
Great, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Next is our communications director, Kelly Turner.
Thank you. I wanted to share an event coming up at the library. They're currently hosting their first-ever mini-book sale. As many of you know, their programming is funded by donations and events that they host with the Friends of the Library organization. One of those events is usually the big spring book sale where people... Sorry, it's lightning. People donate books and then they sell those books for a profit and then that's what funds their programming. With COVID this year, that had to be canceled, so they have moved to a mini-book sale. It'll be open until August 21st. These are items that are donated, there are books, DVDs, CDs, jigsaw puzzles, and they'll be on sale in the hallway there. They do ask that you bring cash and you wear a mask and social distance, but if you have the opportunity, please go out and support our Speedway Public Libraries because as with everybody else, it's been an interesting year and things are a little bit different for their funding mechanisms, so. I also wanted to remind residents that there is still time to complete the 2020 census. I have noticed census takers out in the community, so it is that time that they're going to be coming to your home if you haven't filled it out already. They are equipped with masks and hand sanitizer and all of that. They're supposed to be following the public health guidelines. If someone comes to your door, they should have a US Census ID with them. And the ones that I have seen have also carried US Census bags and T-shirts and they're all geared up with their US Census stuff, so you should know who that is coming to your house. If you would like to fill out the census online, you can do so at 2020census.gov or by phone at 1-844-330-2020. And we would highly encourage you to fill that out. That helps us with getting federal funds for our community. And then finally, before the storm takes us away, I want to thank Bill P. and Brian Pierce for getting a back-to-school video filmed very quickly and up for the community prior to schools starting this past week. It was a big undertaking to go and tour the schools and get all of the different precautions that have been put in place by the administration to make sure that families felt comfortable sending their kids back, that kids kind of reduced their anxiety a little bit about what the unknowns were. And at this time, that video has been viewed over 5,000 times, so I would say that that was a very helpful thing for the community. I've heard nothing but positive feedback both about the informational video, as well as kudos to Dr. Trebley and his staff for trying to make this as normal of a situation as possible. I've heard lots of kids are enjoying school even with their masks on, even with social distancing. Lots of teachers have given positive feedback that they feel safe, so I'm very happy with that and I'm glad that their hard work is paying off, so. Unless you have any questions, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is our report from our town manager, Carlos May.
Hello again. Well, you've heard from all the department heads, from last month's State of the Town to this month, we are definitely moving forward, moving ahead. Most of the projects that we have slated, such as the new town hall, Founder Square, the 1300 block, those are all trucking along in a very good and positive way, so hopefully we will see even more movement on those locations. Aside from that, I would like to remind the town that I do do the This is Speedway. If you have any questions that you want answered directly from me in that monthly video, please, you can email it directly to me or to Kelly, or contact information will be on the TV screens there. Just let us know what you would like to do, what questions you might have or what concerns you might have, and I'll try to address those directly in the video. Aside from that, clerk treasurer and I have been working to create, obviously, the budget proposals that will be submitting to you later on this week. And I just want to thank him for the good collaboration, as I think we have been a very good team thus far and we certainly haven't seen the problems that, what was it, New Palestine that you said?
New Palestine.
So certainly it helps when all elements of government are working hand-in-hand in tandem to make sure that the municipality is moving forward. Other than that, I just want to thank the staff for continuing to do a good job and thank the councilors for being open to communication between myself, the clerk treasurer, and the entire council. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
Great.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Next is a report from our council members. We'll begin with Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Just want to say that looking forward to meeting with you, department heads, this next week here for budget and then also to welcome Gary Pettigal to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Councilor Gary Pettigo.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to report out on. I'm the new kid on the block, so to speak, although I'm now beginning my 31st year here as a Speedway resident. That being said, I'm also just over two weeks here on the council, so got a whole lot of things to learn. I'm very excited about the opportunity, and what a beautiful way to jump in with both feet about to get going in the budgets here later this week. So, looking forward to it, looking forward to getting to know everybody here tonight that's with us even better. So, thank you very much.
Great. Next is Councilor Gary Reeks.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to welcome Gary as well. I appreciate what Eileen said as well. This is Budget Week, and there's undoubtedly some challenges to face with COVID-19, but this team works well together. We have tremendous department leaders and staff, as well as Clerk Treasurer and our Town Manager, so I'm excited about the opportunities for us. But Gary, in particular, welcome you. We haven't really known each other. Our kids are similar in age, but we've never really spent much time together, so we welcome you to council. And I just want to thank anyone and everyone that's been a part of planning. I think Chief Fishburne made a comment that was really very true. There's been so much planning for things that just aren't going to happen, with the exception of maybe the schools at the moment. There's been an awful lot of planning by a variety of people, various department heads and different organizations and whatnot, and they've done a great job, but, you know, decisions have to be made based on public safety. Ultimately, I think Pinsky Organization is doing and has done what they think is best, and their record speaks for themselves, so we respect that decision, and we'll continue to work with them to make them as successful and our town as successful as we can. And with that, I'll shut up so that we can maybe get out of this storm that's going all around us.
Next is Vice President of our Council, Vince Noblet.
Thank you, David. I just want to remind everybody that it is back-to-school time, and to be aware when you're in school zones to slow down. Nothing is more important than the safety of our kids, and I would hope that everybody can set an example out there and just take their foot off the accelerator for a little bit to, you know, get past the school zone. I also appreciate Speedway Police Department being visible in those school zones, just reminding people that they need to take care, and even when they're operating with lighter manpower than what they normally need, it does, you know, just another thing that they have to get in front of from that standpoint. I also want to let the public know that because of COVID and the lack of people that will be attending, like everybody, the race, this has put a big hurt on school funding and the parking revenue for the schools. They take that revenue and use that for buses and transportation of kids to other schools, and this year, that revenue has been wiped out. The other thing is, you know, even with the Lions Club, our revenue has been eliminated this year from that standpoint. But, you know, we're going to be out working hard to replace those funding mechanisms so that we can pump money back into schools and public safety and wherever needs it from that standpoint. The other thing I would just briefly want to talk about, I had an opportunity to meet with the plant manager at Coke. I was impressed with the investment that the Speedway Coke plant is putting into that plant. They're just announced that they're moving all their trucks and local delivery guys up to Whitestown, but they're going to be increasing the capacity of this plant here. And I had an opportunity to discuss with them, and I thought it was very refreshing to hear that the investment in new infrastructure and increasing their production capability that they're going to be announcing shortly in the near future, and I wish them all the luck. I also want to thank Dan Jensen. We were, basically, had about six months' worth of chance to get to know him, worked with him, and when we were out, basically, getting the word out with him running. I know that he had a lot of challenges. He is an independent contractor, and the time to be successful in that business and the demanding time that takes place on this council is challenging, and Dan thought it would be best that he would step away from that, and I want to wish Gary congratulations on the replacement, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
That's all I have, David.
Great, thank you. And final is my report, and as always, all the councilors have covered what I was going to speak about. So, mine will be very brief. I'd like to welcome Gary to the council, look forward to working with him. I want to thank Dan Jensen for his time that he served with us. Really appreciate that, and I know we've mentioned it several times, but our town budget hearings are this Wednesday and Thursday here at the town hall at 6:00 PM. Those are open to the public. The public can attend, so if you want to learn about numbers and what all Jacob does in the background, it's fun to watch, but a lot of good, a lot of good information. And finally, for those keeping score at home, no one had to tell me to put my face mask on when I came in the room tonight, but I want to reemphasize, when you're out in public, wear your mask, social distance, and let's keep Speedway safe. Please visit our businesses, make sure that you support them so they can keep functioning the way they are, and just wear your mask. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:56.